Good, alright. I don't have a gravel, but we will start. Good afternoon.
Recording in progress.
Alright, good afternoon and welcome to the budget. Part of the agenda tonight, we will first stand for the pledge allegiance and national anthem.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Alright, so we will start with, oh, sorry, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Here.
Hi, Kate Johnson.
Here.
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 So we will start with administrative salaries on page 183.
Mr. Chairman, we have presented a transfer from this account.
Okay.
I can read it if you want.
Please.
So the administration recommends that the following SRF spending charge be changed as follows. So it's to reduce the position of Director of Climate, School Climate and Culture, and to add four climate and culture specialists. So while it's SRF spending, it would affect, ultimately affect the administration account. I believe this has been provided to the school committee.
Thank you. Any questions? Member Mailman?
Yeah, we don't have to stand during finance, okay. Weird rules. So Brian, you're alerting us that that, through the chair, that your, that this change is part of the changes that we had asked for, that we hadn't seen yet? Is that what this is? Or is this a change that's?
Through the chair, since the finalization of the budget, but during the briefings that we provided the school committee numbers, we had indicated to the school committee that this change would be made at this time to reduce the Director of School Climate and Culture and adding four climate and culture specialists for the middle school level.
Okay, and then that was part of the book or not part of the book? This is a change to the book, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So it appears, depending on which total you take, that, that our administrative salaries is about 4%? I don't know if you'll buy that or not. I use the 460, I use the general fund dollars. How, can you help, help us or help me understand how that lines up with other districts? How, you know, where are we in terms of SOA increase for that line item? Can you speak to that, please?
Through the chair, so the way DESE captures administrative spending, we've summarized in the informational section of the budget book, which essentially says we are one of the lowest spending communities, of our peer communities for administrative spending. You may recall that one of the school committee policies has adopted a cap on administrative spending and, which is 1.5% of the foundation budget. And the FY24 budget is still below that level of spending.
Okay, and that is whose rule? Our rule? The 1.5%?
The, the school committee adopted that as policy, I'd say eight or nine years ago.
Okay, and is that, that has never been revisited through the chair?
Through the chair, at this point, that hasn't been a need to revisit that level of spending.
Yep, and?
But in relation to, if I can finish, in relation to foundation spending, we are still far below what the foundation budget allocates for administration spending in terms of our actual spending.
Okay. When we see, we see a lot of threes. When we see three, are those quadrant positions? Like if we're adding three? Director of Curriculum and, seeing if something pops out at me at the moment. It's my notes from the other day. Coordinator of McKinney-Vento Grants, including SRF Fund, three positions in this line item, which I actually think referred to the Director of Curriculum and Professional Learning? No, those are all separate positions.
So through the chair, if I can, any of the numbers in parentheses indicate the number of those positions?
Okay. Maybe I was... Are some of the additional, like the, the climate specialists or things like that, or, maybe not the climate specialists, they are school-specific, but are some of the positions, you know, add-ons to the quadrant system? I don't know if we have a, I don't recall if we have an updated org chart with all the new positions? Many of which we had approved before.
Through the chair, there are no administrative positions that
Okay.
are new for the quadrant model.
Okay. Teacher salaries is next. Okay, alright, that's all I have, thanks.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to administration, I, I will say that I share what I think is, member Mailman's, maybe befuddlement is too strong a word, but in terms of sort of what's moving in and out. Do, are we, we, we are eliminating the Coordinator of Alternative Education Program and we're creating a Director of Alternative Programs? Or are we not creating a Director of Alternative Programs? Through the chair to administration.
We are changing the Coordinator of Alternative and making that a Director of Alternative with, and there's already a job description that exists for that.
There is already a job description that we've approved?
That's been in, on the books, not approved by this committee, but it exists.
Okay, so that's, that's a, it's a position description that we haven't yet seen? Just to make sure I'm not losing track of what we're doing.
Correct.
Okay.
Because it, yes, absolutely, it doesn't, we won't be bringing it to committee. It's already something that was approved probably before any of us were in place.
Okay. And then, the, the, I, I do want to talk a little bit about the Dean positions. Because I, I honor the intent and I understand what, what we're trying to do. I appreciated the idea of a pilot last year that effectively kind of tried out the position and, and, you know, gave us a chance to see how it worked. Understand the bit of information that we got in the budget reflection. By the way, I would have, it would have been helpful to have gotten the proposed transfer as part of that, as part of the agenda. The, the, the struggle that I'm having is that last year was intended to be a pilot to allow us to reflect on whether or not this was an effective use of that position. And I'm still feeling as if I don't really know that for sure. And I understand that it was asked for by the secondary principals. And I also feel like I've, I've done this enough to know that the principals pay attention to what is being granted this year and that's one of the things that's being granted this year. So I'm not, I'm not going to make a motion about it right now, but I am, I, I will say that I'm uncomfortable with our going from one to everywhere based on a limited amount of information that we have. And I, I at least am going to view those as being on a trial basis because I don't think we have yet proved the efficacy of that position. And I want to make sure that if we're doing something like adding whatever it is, an administrative support position or what have you, that we're doing it in the place that actually, doing it in a place and a way that actually makes the difference that is intended. So I think that's the only comment I have on administration.
Anybody else? Member Johnson?
Thank you. To the chair, to the administration, just in regards to that, when it comes to the Dean of Students in addition of those five positions, can you just explain what the, like, what the job will entail? Because I know when it was first piloted last year, there was certain criterias, I believe you guys looked at that and felt that there was a different way to kind of do this. So I'm just trying to figure out, for us to understand kind of where we're going with this and what that entails. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I'm going to have both Dr. Tatum and Mr. Foley speak to how we plan on, well, how we've, how the position works this year. And just to remind the committee, we actually weren't able to start this position until about November. So not a full school year at North. And how we plan on growing it and what this would look like at all of our high schools. And so Dr. Tatum will speak to it and Mr. Foley will speak to it. And then if need be, we'll have Annie and then I'll come in and finish for all of you, okay? Go ahead, Dr. Tatum.
Dr. Tatum?
Thank you. Through the chair, much of the work of the Dean position, the chair, has been on culture and climate work. Working on student safety, development of relationships with students, with families, between students and families. There is a discipline component in collaboration with the assistant principals and really trying to provide our assistant principals with more time to be the instructional leaders that they are and taking, sharing that, that work with assistant principals around discipline in, in schools.
Mr. Foley?
Through the chair, but additionally, we also envision the Dean of Students supporting the transition of grade nine students from middle school to high school. We know that students who do not success, who are unsuccessful in that transition have a significantly lower rate of graduation. So we see this as a key component to increasing our graduation rates down the road. So our grade nine, the Dean of Students will serve also as a support to incoming students in all kinds of different ways, both academic, social. We'll work with them, restorative work, we'll work with the teachers of grade nine to make sure that they are attending to the needs that grade nine students specifically bring to school with them to ensure a successful transition and a successful grade nine year so that we don't have students who repeat grade nine and we don't have students who, because they don't get off, get high school off on the right foot, don't have success.
Thank, thank you. And through the chair, just a follow-up question with that. So in, in essence, they, they will be assistant, assistant principal with all grade nine students coming into the building. And what that will also entail is some culture and climate stuff? Working with the culture and climate coordinators in a school, am I correct about that? Okay, and then also with that, would they be also working with, ensuring that 504 plans are implemented? Discipline, working on mediation, other things like that in regards to their role as the Dean of Students?
Through the chair, that would actually be more of, that, that last piece, the 504s, the, what was the other thing you said? The, I'm sorry, I forgot what you said, but 504s and there was something else that you said, discipline?
Discipline.
Not like infractions, but more like, so the Dean is about the prevention work at the school, right? With the climate and culture teams and, and the school adjustment counselors and creating a school culture that is welcoming and has that belonging spirit to it as well as any students that are high-level needs. They would do the restorative work with those individuals, but more specialized 504s or any kind of, that would, those would fall under our, in our special ed world. And, and through our quadrant teams, they would help with the 504 work as well. So the Dean won't be clear of that, right? But they won't be the, the person doing the oversight. We're going to have our, our quadrant teams with our assigned ETCs helping with that at the school level.
Thank you. And I just have one more question through the chair, to the administration. Can someone, what is the student assignment director? What is that?
Through the chair, that's the director at the Parent Information Center.
Okay. And we're hiring two of those. Although, it's budgeted for two positions. Right?
Dr. Tatum?
If I can just clarify through the chair. Mr. Johnson talked about grade nine and working with grade nine students. I just want to make it clear that the Dean of Students is not solely for grade nine students, right? They'll be involved in a lot of the work with the tracking. But in terms of other elements of the, of the school, they'll work with all grade levels within, within the high school.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Off set.
Okay. Member Kamara?
Thank you to the chair. So I just want to echo my colleague's comment with regards to this Dean of Students. So I, so I'm a bit confused of this as well. And it's a bit confusing, number one, because I think when this was first brought to our attention with us piloting this, it was, hopefully we're using data to support the need of us having this at North High. I, I'm just a little bit curious as to if we're using the same data to support that, this need. I don't think, you know, these positions are, should be here, to be honest. I do think with what I'm hearing, I'm hearing a bunch of different things. And I'm asking myself, like, where, you know, like the pool of people that are already in place? And we have, like, sometimes when, when the comments were given, I heard something that a school adjustment counselor may be able to do. And then I was hearing something that maybe a school, maybe psychologist is able to do or maybe like a school, or maybe if we have more external, like, support, like therapeutic support for students, which I think we need to also focus on. Like, I know there was a grant opportunity last time and maybe I think only four companies or organizations apply to those. So I mean, those are the things that I really want for us to increase more of than, and then use data to ascertain whether or not we do need these director positions with these amount of salaries and whether or not that is going to equip to, you know, physical, psychosocial outcomes, academic outcomes as well among our students. I'm a bit, yeah, and especially have, we have not gotten data of the first position already. Thank you.
If I may?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. So we spent time with our superintendent student advisory in May. And we asked the youth specifically more information. We wanted to better understand what they needed as it came, when it came to wellness and supports. Because I think as adults, we seem to make assumptions that they all need therapists or they all need counselors or they, and, and there are children who need that. But overall, what they told us is they need time to socialize. They need community built back into their schools. It's missing. They need, and they need it now more than they did in the past because things are come, they're still trying to heal from close to two years of isolation. And so they're looking for ways where they can have breaks in their school day. Not long breaks, they're not looking to mess around. They're saying, we just need time for community, for pride-building, for connection with each other, for socializing. These basic things that we as adults, when we were in school, we had. And over time, they don't, whether it's missing or it's not enough right now because of the results of, of the pandemic, this, this came from our students. And so as we sat and we listened to them and they told us this, we thought, alright, so we need people at the school and we can, we can use our existing staff, we're just, we're asking more of them to do this, to create these spaces for them, to create breaks, wellness days, working with our youth around student voice and find out from them because what works at South might look differently than North, Darty, all of that. So I just want to put out there and, and share the student voice because when we sat and we heard them, it really gave more clarity to us about what the needs are. And again, it, there was some who said, there are some students who need more higher-level needs. But in general, our greatest need is for us to be able to connect back with each other. We're missing that. And, and so we want to keep that in mind as well. Now, we see these, these Deans as helping to create that culture of belonging at the schools. We believe that there is nobody who, that's their primary role. Everybody has that hat that they put on off and on, but the primary role at the school, that has not been there. So that's what we're looking at. And, and we heard it from our youth telling us that just as early as May. And then I heard it in my listening and learning tours over and over again. How do we shift and have climate and culture that's much more positive? That's much more inclusive of all the different people who come into our schools and, and the overall student well-being? So I think that that's important as, as we think about these budgetary considerations.
Off set? Okay. Member Clancy?
Thank you. So through the chair, just on the, my only point on the Deans of Students. When working with the principals, do they, I know that if we say, we're going to give you an extra body, any, any principal is going to say, yes, please, you know, we'll take them. So they understood what the Deans will be used for and they really felt the need for this in their schools.
I actually want my quadrant, if, if one of, because you've spoken?
I would appreciate that.
Yes, I think that that would be helpful.
Through the chair, absolutely.
Okay.
This is a position principals are looking to have.
And when you were at Burnco, would you have liked this position?
Yes.
Okay. My other que, just real fast, and just looking at the schools that, obviously the high schools, and is it possibly something down the road? If it's working, we get the data that it's truly working. And we know that North is working. I, would we look at putting it in the other high schools? The smaller ones?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. So right now, what we're budgeting is to have it at the four comprehensive and then Worcester Tech. So if, if the data showed, then absolutely. And we might, you know, there might be a need. We can also start to think about, over time, how we might repurpose some other addition, or positions as, you know, matriculation happens. I also want to put for the committee to consider that if, if indeed the desire, that there is still some trepidation, we could go a little bit slower. We could say we can use, we can take a look again at data and say, well, we won't do everybody all at once. We'll do a few more and we can, but that would, that's something to consider. It does slow down, again, the movement of creating these, these learning spaces where students are, and adults are at a place where they are best ready to learn.
So through the chair, just to be, I'm, if the principals want this, I have the experts in front of me saying they want this. I'm fine with it, but I would like to see data down the road. And I'm fine with going, you know, putting them at all the other schools. Just to be clear on, you know, I just want to make sure that it's something that's needed and I'm, I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
Member Novick?
Thank you. First of all, I think someone used ETC and that was also in our backup. I don't know what that is. Through the chair.
Through the chair, it's a team chair person.
A team chair person?
Evaluation team chair person.
Evaluation team chair. Okay, so it's a special education position?
Mr. Allen? Yes.
Alright, I think I'll probably, in which case it will be in the teacher account and I should ask questions there. Okay. I, I feel as, so I want to echo what Member Clancy just said in terms of, you know, if an administrator is offered a support position, they're going to take it. I, I feel as if the more we talk about this, the less I have a good understanding of what it is that they're defined by doing. And having heard students talk about coming back from remote learning and having heard what they've said about their needs and the way the buildings are and so forth, I really don't feel like an administrative position is actually responding to that. And I, I'd say that, you know, not, I think there are other things in here that do. But I, I feel as if the, the Dean position keeps being this sort of shifting, shifting spot that the, the, the position description that we approved and then also this sort of, if the person is, I mean, we have this, this sort of, this conversation in, in their context, right? Which is that if you have somebody who is in charge of discipline, you don't want that to be the person who also then is in charge of, you know, creating a particular kind of climate. And yes, you know, that we talk about teachers or parents or anyone who has to do both aspects, but I really don't, I, I have no wish to sort of pull things out of a school in terms of, of that kind of thing, but I really don't feel like this is a, a position that's being particularly well, well-defined in, in terms of this. Yeah, I guess that's it, Mr. Chair.
Member McCollum not being heard, then we'll go, Member Kamara and Member Johnson?
Thank you, and I'd just like to thank you for providing additional information. The feedback that I've gotten from schools, well, from North, was that they thought that it worked very well for them and it was successful pilot for them and that that did result in other schools requesting them. And I've heard a lot of positive feedback from Burnco about the excitement around the position and from some of our other high schools. So I am in support of the positions. I would just echo that I would like us to see more data at the end of the school year about the efficacy and that we are clear with the schools about what the responsibility is and that it's not. And I think, I don't want to speak for Member Clancy, but I think I was kind of understanding what you're saying. You know, of course, you're going to want an extra support staff or body in the school, but make sure that we're utilizing them for the reasons that administration has created the role. So, thank you.
Thank you. Member Kamara?
So the chair. Yes, because, yes, so I guess like my thoughts remain the same. But I, I'm curious, is it that we are having these Dean of Students to merit this with like the dollar amount? Because that's the president's, that's kind of what we set with the other positions? Because I, one of the things I see on this, one of the pages over here is that we reduced a Director of Climate and Culture to four specialists. So, which, this is a bit confusing, but, so is there a need that something could be looked into?
Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, I'm sorry, Member Kamara, I'm not sure what your question is.
So the dollar amount for these positions and, and, and for the Dean of Students positions, is that was, I'm trying to understand, is that the same salary that we have for the? is that was, I'm trying to understand, is that the same salary that we have for the one that we approved?
The contract, that is per the, this is part, they are part of the EAW, and so this is their contracted amount, their contracted salary. So they, they have the same salary as an assistant principal. So it's a Unit B.
Interesting. So that means it's not the same as what we approved the last time?
It is.
Oh, it is? Okay. Yeah. So, yeah, I kind of maintain my position on this. I don't feel the need that we need all of this. And if we did, I want data first, because usually you have data first, information first. And then, and I want to also congratulate and comment on all the principals who, you know, gave word that this is necessary. But I think the fact that we're blindly approving this sum of money, or monies for this position without clear clarity, it's a bit vague for me. And, yeah, and I think we should, you know, be utilizing this money to actually support students. And I don't think, my comments are the same with my colleagues in other. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnson?
Yes, sorry. Just a follow-up to the administration. So again, with some of my colleagues, I actually did have a conversation with staff at North, and kind of went up there, and for them, it was a great model. In speaking with the dean of students, in the collaboration that person was able to have with the principals, with the school adjustment counselors, even the nurses and the teachers, and kind of build that relationship, and kind of work with the climate and culture individuals in the school, definitely made an impact. So I'm definitely in support of that. In regards to implementing it into the other schools, can you just kind of talk about the training that they will be going to in regards to doing this work?
Member Superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. So the, the plan is, so recall that we were able to fill the administrative director of positive youth development, Mr. Tony, in January. So he started in January of this school year. He took on the role, and the only dean at that point was Al. So moving forward, the deans will be trained under Mr. Tony on restorative justice, on the, the due process of, of behavior, right? So when a student, when there's an infraction, I've noted that we need more training on how do we do due process so that children actually get a fair kind of hearing, if you will. They will be trained there. That won't be just the deans, it'll be our assistant principals as well. But they'll be trained under Mr. Tony on restorative practice, on due process, and on positive behavior interventions. And that will be a regular training. And then the expectation would be that the deans would then provide oversight to the climate and culture specialists at the school, no assistants, I apologize, climate and culture assistants at the school, based on the data of the school. So if they're seeing issues happening in certain parts of the school, then the climate and culture assistants need to be there more regularly than other places as they're creating that, that connection between children and staff. And the dean will also provide oversight of those climate and culture assistants. And if they need additional training, that will come through Mr. Tony. So in the past, we did not have that, or this school year, that model was just getting started. We did not have a good training system. Moving forward for next school year, we will. Ms. Asalosa, is there anything else to add in terms of training? Because I know it's restorative work, I know it's the due process, I know it's positive interventions. Anything else I'm missing?
Mrs. Asalosa?
Through the chair, it's also, we have just implemented the culture and climate teams in the schools. And so the dean of students would be leading that work. There's a team of individuals that are comprised at the culture and climate teams. And so they're identifying capacity challenges, conditions that are integral to those challenges in order to have outcomes. And so they're going to be leading the culture and climate teams in the high schools.
And Mr. Tony will be training them and supporting them in the leadership of those teams?
He has already begun.
Thank you. Thank you. All set?
If, if I could, Miss Kamara, Member Kamara, if I can refer you to, and any other committee member that's interested in the data outcomes. If you look at GB three fifty, GB three one five point one annex H, that's got the data, the suspension data for North High School, so you can see a comparison.
Thank you.
I think it's Agenda Page thirty-five.
North, okay, we all set then? So, I just thought that position was done in November was a great idea for the dean, and we'll get to see that, our proceeds in other schools over the next year, and looking forward to it. I think it's a great idea, and it's going to make a difference in kids' lives, so much appreciated. So we're going to pass, so the motions to approve the, I can relate. Did we do the transfer of Mr. Allen already on the, on the administrative salaries for climate and culture specialists, four forty-seven? We need a roll call on that, or this?
We'll take a roll call, but it's actually out of ESER funding. But to recognize that's the change in funding, I think a vote of the school committee would acknowledge that transfer.
Okay. So to approve that transfer, roll call? Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
And the call?
Yes.
And roll call on the other?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so approval of the administration's salaries, those in favor, opposed, or ordered?
Yeah, I'm going to actually take myself out of this one.
Say it again?
I'm going to recuse myself out of this one.
You need to recuse yourself?
No, she wants a roll call.
Oh, roll call, gotcha. Sorry, I couldn't hear you. Roll call? Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Roll call, yes. No, no, no.
She's doing the roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No abstain?
Yes.
Marked down, Member Kamara is abstaining? Is it number the mailman?
Oh, yes.
Member McCollum?
Yes.
And roll call on the other?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now we are on teacher salaries, on page one eighty-six. What's that, Member Mailman? Follow by Member Novak?
Thank you. Mr. Allen in a, through the chair, Mr. Allen. Can you, we are, we have two hundred open positions right now. And we had X number of open positions last year. I'm, I'm looking at the, at the backup that was given to us. We had a budget of two hundred and three thousand, and we spent two hundred and three thousand for, our expected expenditures are two hundred and two thousand, so right in there. If we had that many openings, why don't we have a bigger line item? In a general, a bigger difference in our expenditures? Thank you. You follow my question? I didn't finish it. Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you, if we had, we had adopted a budget of two hundred and three thousand, we expect to spend two hundred and two thousand on general fund teacher salaries. Yet we have, which includes secondary teachers, student services, special ed, blah, blah, blah. We, but yet we had two hundred open positions through the year. How, why did we not spend less money? Or do we continually mess with the budget number? Can you, that's a bad?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so the easiest way to answer the impact on this year is all the new positions from last year's budget was through ESER spending. So it wasn't necessarily reflected in this account. So as we're making adjustments in ESER spending, as we've discussed over the course of the year, this is where some of those savings have materialized from, is in position vacancies. So we, we're pre-funding SOA bridge funding, one year in advance, new spending in the budget. And so if there's vacancies even within those new positions, we're realizing those savings within the ESER account.
So that's why we had seventeen million last year in SR, and we're only recommending eleven, I'm sorry, eleven million this year? Is that?
Mr. Allen?
Basically the delta?
Through the chair, the seventeen million dollars from last year included the hold harmless money, which has been transferred back into the general fund. So we've been using a number of thirteen million dollars as our SOA bridge funding.
So when we looked at last year's, when we voted to adopt the budget last year, were we looking at two hundred and three thousand dollars, two hundred and three million dollars, I'm sorry?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, the adopted budget was two hundred and three million, correct.
And then what would the, so are you saying the ESER spending at that time would have been?
In addition to that.
And because we are, so how are all of these unfilled positions recognized through this budget?
Mr. Allen?
Through the, through the chair, so our budget also anticipates vacancies which get included in the calculation. We have a vacancy factor built into our budget calculations, knowing that none of the positions are going to be full, filled for the entire year.
To the tune of two hundred positions?
So the overall budget this year has a vacancy factor, and all the salary accounts totaling about six million dollars.
That's the answer. Okay, thank you.
All set? Miss Novak, Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are adding adjustment counselors with the intent of bringing ourselves to the ratio of the three fifty to one. Looking back at the staffing formula in the back of the book, for guidance counselors, the only note we make is that the American School Counselor Association recommends caseloads for guidance counselors of two fifty to one. I don't, I don't see a place where we talk about that. And I don't want to sort of underestimate the importance of guidance counselors as we're doing this, these changes too. Would anyone offhand know both what our ratio is? And is there any, are there any changes being made in terms of our, our guidance counselors for this year through the Chair to Administration?
I don't know if any of us have that number right now. It was under Dr. Sipple. We have a new, but I, but I don't know if you have that. Through the chair to Member O'Connell Novak. We looked specifically at our school adjustment counselors. We have not started down the pathway on our guidance counselors yet. Doesn't mean we're not going to be looking at it in the future. But maybe if you have those numbers, or Mr. Chris?
Dr. Sipple?
Through the chair, so I don't have those numbers handy. However, my recollection is that when, there were additional positions added two years ago, three years ago, that effectively reduced, achieved that two fifty to one ratio for guidance counselors at the secondary level.
I, I would say that, and I, my assumption is that probably some of this is going to be the conversation of the college and career department as we move forward. But I would say that, at least in my experience as a parent, that, that if that is, if that is where we are, then that is probably still too high for us. That I don't think that students are actually getting the support that they need, regardless of the direction that they're going in, to have the really sort of thoughtful conversations that really are necessary for students to get what they need. So I guess I would flag that for the administration's attention. So moving to the, what was just mentioned, the ETC, which I guess are the evaluation team chairs. As they were represented within, I just, I know we say this all the time in education, but we can make sure that our acronyms are spelled out as much as possible. The, so are they within this account, the ten, like I didn't actually have a chance to add that, I don't think that's actually necessarily possible. Is that the ten additional school-based teaching positions within line D? Or where are those ads represented through the Chair to Administration?
Mr. Allen? Through the chair, I?
So the, the, we, so when we asked last, at the last meeting, there were places where there were unassigned new positions, my assumption is that that was what we were getting. Is that, is it that we were actually getting, that there were, we were getting all, all assignments? That we weren't just getting the new assignments, is that right?
Through the chair, so this year, we've, traditionally, we've had unassigned elementary classroom teachers, which the school committee, I think, has been fully aware of, that we assign in August, based upon actual class size. We've actually adopted that for both secondary and special education this year as well, because there's a lot of moving parts. So there are still unassigned positions as of today to be assigned during the summer months and deployed at schools, based upon enrollment, course selection, at secondary levels, and specialization needs.
Okay, thank you. And then to go back up to the, the earlier line, we, thank you for the information regarding open positions. And I understand that this is a moving target this time of year. So we have, of the thirty positions budgeted for psychologists, six of them are open. And for the ninety-two positions of school adjustment counselors, only eighty-six of them are filled. And so I guess I would be interested in hearing from administration about what our strategy is here in terms of filling what we know to be positions that I think probably every district in probably the country is looking to add. So that we're not, sort of, in some cases here, we're adding positions so that we're not just effectively adding open positions. Through the chair.
Member Superintendent?
If I could have Dr. Koo come up, and she can speak to the work that's getting started, well, that's been going on. Where's Ms. Perez? I don't, oh, there you are. But Ms. Perez has been starting, but I'll let Dr. Koo, and if Ms. Perez wants to add anything.
Dr. Koo?
So through the chair, we are recognizing that these are positions that we really need to be thoughtful cognizance. We've been working very closely with each of those departments, and we actually have already started. We hired much earlier this year than we've ever hired. So what you're seeing in there, and I think I, I framed those numbers by saying that it is a moving target, and we took, that we wanted to make sure we had accurate data in the moment. And so that was what was the open positions, as opposed to what was budgeted and what we pay for that time period. And that's why I put that qualification on there, to say, we know that as people are resigning towards the end of the year, we're hiring new people, it doesn't reflect all of those numbers. But to your point, we, because we hired earlier this year, and we're very, very strategic in our hiring, we are able to, we are filling those positions much, much quicker. And I think that the, the contract also helped, to be honest with you. And so all of those factors have really supported us in what we believe will be a year that we will have much fewer open positions.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. We are adding six preschool teachers, that's fantastic. And obviously, there are sort of changes also happening in terms of some, some assignments. It could, through the Chair to Administration, where is it that we'll have preschool next year?
We have Ms. Kelly coming up to speak to that.
Ms. Kelly?
Oh, hi. Through the chair. I do have a list of all the preschools that I can send to you. I can pull it up on my computer and get it to you. We're keeping all of the same. We've added a full-day preschool in all quadrants. So every quadrant has a full-day preschool. We've added two or three sale preschool classrooms. We've shifted some preschools, the Chain La Magna preschools are going. One's going to Clark Street School, and one's going to Elm Park. And we, of the six, we have added three brand-new classrooms, and we have three in the pocket, ones we know our needs. But we do have available spots, I believe it's ninety-eight spots are still available with what we have. So we have three, because a lot of times in the fall, we get new students and students with special ed needs that we have to address.
Great, okay. And thank, because you've actually led into a, to a second question for me. So the s- So the sale classrooms are clearly us responding to what we're seeing as sort of growing need among our student population. I also know that one thing that we heard over and over again when we were doing the SOA hearings was the, the ongoing need from families for us to simply have more full-day pre-K. That half-day pre-K really only does people so much good. Is there, is that sort of part of the scope of what administration sees as us moving towards?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, that will be our desired state. Of course, we have to look at facilities and all of that. The committee will be happy to know that we met, we've started our meetings with the city. We had another meeting today. We're really trying to look at a full master plan. But we, we firmly believe and know that full-day preschool is what our children need. And so finding ways to do that over time, absolutely.
And I mean partly it's just the competitive school committee member in me, but I, my heart breaks a little bit every time I see another headline of like another district moves to full-day, full, you know, complement pre-K, which I think it was Springfield this year again. So I'm glad to hear that. The, the final thing, Mr. Chair, is this. In the backup that we got regarding changes that, revisions that were made since we got the budget book, the GB three dash one fifty, the very first item in terms of changes. Item number two was that administration plans to hire four rather than six integrated coaches to start the Q team work. That would then open up two teaching slots that were funding through Esser. I, I plan to make several motions to try to move towards something which we can talk about when we get to paraprofessionals. But I'd like, Mr. Chair, this is aligned to what we did with the other one where it's Esser funding that's being moved rather than actually moving money out of this actual account. But I would like us to take what I believe would be a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from that line within Esser and move it to paraprofessionals. My intent, just to be clear to my colleagues, is that something we haven't talked about for a long time, although then we talked about it a lot, was the fact that we still have kindergartens in Worcester that don't have a paraprofessional aide. My understanding is that there's about twenty classrooms that don't have a, a second adult in those classrooms. And what I'd like us to do is to pull together the funding over the course of a couple of accounts here for us to be able to fully provide twenty paraprofessionals to that account specifically to the kindergarten to make sure that we're starting next year with a paraprofessional in every kindergarten classroom in the district. So, Mr. Chair, that would be a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, but again it's Esser. I don't know if Mr. Allen would prefer that we do a sort of vote of recognition. It's not really a transfer.
Okay, what does that mean, like, as far as a hundred and fifty thousand, what's being used for now, the Esser?
So the two integrated coaching positions that we had indicated during our budget briefings with the school committee that we weren't going to fill right away would be converted to kindergarten paraeducators.
So this goes on, when did you say that? When did you give us that information?
End of May.
Okay, so this is just in line to what you told us. Okay, and the budget, I guess, was printed?
Through the chair, we actually have another, or to meet the same need, which is to increase the number of instructional aides so that we have one in every, we need to find twenty instructional, my apologies, paraprofessionals. We actually have another option that we'd like to, that I'd like Dr. Morris to speak to before the committee makes a, a final decision on that.
Dr. Morris?
Thank you, through the chair, so is early childhood is an important initiative for our district moving forward. One idea that we would like for all of you to consider is currently we have thirty literacy tutors that work fifteen hours a week. And it would be our suggestion to consider moving these positions toward the early childhood positions as KIA so that we could ultimately realize that optimal ideal where there is a, a second adult in every kindergarten.
Instead of this?
Yes.
Okay, so, and where's, so fifteen literary positions? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, they're called literacy tutors.
Literacy, I'm sorry.
And over the time, we've reduced the amount of hours that they work. So they currently work three hours a day. And we think that we may potentially be able to meet the need of our earliest learners by having two adults in every kindergarten as Member Novak had, had brought up to the committee.
Madam Superintendent?
We currently have thirty of those literacy tutors, I want to make sure I'm using the right term, budgeted for. So we're, that's an, an option where we can repurpose those funds. That's already budgeted in the budget book, repurpose those funds and, and meet the need.
Okay, do we have to move money tonight, or is it also, is this?
We would need to move money tonight.
What's that? Okay, we will, so instead of doing what the proposal was,
I wasn't done yet.
We're going to take fifteen literacy positions, we're going to move that to the paraprofessionals for the secondary person in the classroom, or? I said, I thought you said fifteen, I wrote fifteen. Oh, fifteen hours, so thirty positions, okay. So we're going to move that to the paraprofessionals budget, okay. That's what the administration's recommendation is. Okay, we have Ms. McCullough is next.
I wasn't done.
No, you ask questions still?
Yeah, no, so I, the, the position, so that doesn't really answer my question, Mr. Chair, because we were told that the only four positions were going to be filled, which then means that there's, there is money that was already intended to be allocated within an Esser that is then not being allocated. Can I ask then what's, what's happening, please, through the Chair to Administration?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chairs, so just as a reference, I'm going to get to your, the literacy tutors are on page two fourteen of the budget book. It's six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. You'd actually have to use both the literacy tutors and your a hundred and eighty-five thousand plus another hundred thousand dollars to fully fund twenty KIA positions.
We need, so, okay.
So it's line D on page two fourteen.
Right. I, yeah, we'll have more to say as we go along. So we, I mean, the answer to your question, I think, Mr. Chair, is that there's no transfer that needs to be made yet. We would be doing it when we did educational support salaries and paraprofessionals. It's not actually within this account. I think if I'm understanding Mr. Allen correctly, we actually would need to make the a hundred and eighty-five, we would need to move the, we would need to at least acknowledge that we were using the a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in addition to whatever we do from here on out. We need that regardless of what the plan is.
Member McCullough?
I'm outside.
Member McCullough?
Through the chair to the administration, would, I forget, I don't have to say that during this, right? Did administration have other intentions for the use of that a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in Esser with those positions not being currently filled? Or that's not an issue for us to utilize that that way?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chairs, so it would have been part of the overall Esser strategy that we've been talking about with regards to one-time payments and so forth. But we believe that this would be a more favorable reallocation than perhaps some other positions listed in the budget.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Member Kamara?
Thank you, I just want a clarity here. So are we saying that the, the funds for the paraprofessionals that were maybe transitioned those funds to allocate it towards the thirty literacy tutors? So therefore we won't have the amount of additional paraprofessionals? But we just have the thirty? And then maybe some paraprofessionals? I'm confused.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, I'll try to be more clear. Our goal would be to increase the amount of kindergarten IAs. And in order to, to do that, the transfer amount would not be enough. And we are considering that we could repurpose the line item for the literacy tutors to that aim so that we're able to ensure that we're able to have another adult in all those twenty kindergartens right now that do not have instructional assistants.
Can I, through the chair, can I just frame, perhaps maybe this will help? In order to add twenty kindergarten instructional assistants, we need nine hundred thousand dollars to cover that cost. So this would be a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars towards that nine hundred thousand dollars. The administration, when we get to the account, is recommending literacy tutors of six hundred and twenty-three dollars go towards that nine hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I get it now. Member Clancy?
Actually, I'll wait till we get the educational support salaries, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? So, so we're going to move, so the thirty literacy tutors will cover the a hundred and eighty-five thousand, is that correct?
No.
No, never mind.
The hundred and eighty-five thousand is, are the two additional integrated coaches that we are not filling. That's the hundred and eighty-five.
Okay, so we're going to move that.
Recommended not to fill, correct?
So you recommended that back in May that we wanted to do this, so we will take that.
So, so again, I think similar like we did in the administration account, a motion to reallocate Esser funding from the integrated coaches to kindergarten instructional assistants, I think would be in order.
Okay, so do a roll call on that, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
By Jim Johnson?
Yes.
And the Kamara?
Yes.
And the Mailman?
Yes.
And the McCullough?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions on teacher salaries? So we get a motion to approve, are those in favor, opposed, so ordered? School committee, motion to, Member Mailman, you want to raise?
A question, and I think I, we're going to have a brand, we're going to have many brand-new members, one way or another, this year. And I thought personally that our training, our MASC program that we went to was very valuable. And I, I guess this is, appears somewhere else in our budget, Mr. Allen. But, but do we have, do we have training for all of us to go? I don't recall, last year some of us went and maybe that was because of schedule. Do you actually budget everybody to be able to go to that training conference?
Through the chairs, so that's out of our staff development account. So we fund the school committee members to attend that training through the.
And that's covered?
Yes.
So we, okay, so whoever would be able to go, we'd be able to do that, all right. And then the second issue is the salaries. And I understand that this is our budget, we don't have control over this item, but I also understand that this is city council purview and that it's not just a charter item. Charters could be dealt with in a home rule petition. I absolutely believe this to be an equity issue at fifty percent of the funding as opposed to city council. And I guess at this juncture, all I can do is appeal, appeal to the mayor to bring this to council. I assume that you might think that this is an outdated percentage that's been used for a variety of different reasons. And I'd ask you to, to bring that to your body, to your other body, to discuss with them and see if we can do something like a home rule petition. It isn't going to impact any of us here because it's going to take forever and a day. But it's, but it is what, we should be going forward. If we're looking at equity, we should also be looking at equity for these bodies that we are in charge of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on school committee salaries? Member Kamara?
Thank you, just going back to the question from Member Novak, I mean not Member Novak, Millman. For the, for the, the training that we may be a part of and the funds that have been generated for that, is that, does that cover like hotel and all that, like what is within the cost? Does it cover hotel fees to go there, food and transportation?
Member Allen?
Through the chair, in the past it has covered the registration fees and accommodations.
No one could gas going down forth, yeah, travel, yeah. Everything's covered. Normal costs. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, are those in favor, opposed, so ordered? What's that? Oh, do you have another question?
Yes, and I would like to, thank you so much. I would like to ask you for the, what is this one? The account five hundred nine one 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 two for school committee salaries. I would like to inquire from you, what do you think, or how do you think we can make such better? Because I'm interested in your views with equity with regards to that line. So if you can share an insight in terms of your views to that.
Mr. Allen?
Oh, can I put this to the mayor or no?
What number are you at? I don't see it here, I'm sorry. Line five hundred, you said, or?
No, the school committee salaries, we tell the same line.
Oh, okay. I thought you said five, budget number five hundred, I'm sorry. So what's your question?
So, yeah, my, my question is, I'm, I'm, you know, this is like my first term. And I'm a bit, I'm, I'm interested to understand, like, one of, because I heard equity in, with regards to this school committee salaries here, and I want to understand your views towards that with regards to the item that Member Millman just spoke about.
That's, Member Mill can speak to it. Asking me why, I don't understand the question. So basically this is governed by the charter. So if we want to put a petition in front of the school, the city councils, a few ways to do it. The city council can pass it, we can put it on the ballot, we can do a home rule petition. And, so that's how you do, if you want to change it.
Oh, that's, oh, that's, that's the process?
Yeah, that's the process. The school committee can't do it, it has to be the city council.
And so your view is that we are in line to, to, to doing that?
No, not right now, no, there's no, this will take, like, Member Mill, I would say this will take about a year, I would think, or maybe several months.
So is that a way for us to start, or?
Yeah, you can put the petition in front of the council, you can send it to MO.
Okay, thank you.
Member Clancy?
Thank you, I just want to go, just to be clear, if that was something, I, I'm not in support of it. I'm happy with the job that we're doing. I'm happy that we do get the stipend from the city. I know that a lot of school committees do it for free, they do it voluntarily. And I'm, like I said, I just want to go on record and say I'm happy with it and I'm approving this budget item the way it is, thank you.
Thank you, okay. So can we approve the school committee now? You still, do you refuse yourself?
Yeah, for the other stuff.
Oh, okay, yes, oh, this is the one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with that. So I, I don't think the question of, was more of an understanding question. I don't think there is, it was the, the notion of, you know, what I just heard. I think, you know, one can accept and approve and favor and do all that sort. But I think sometimes there needs to be questions asked.
Yeah, sure.
And answers given, so especially when there's lack of clarity, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are we good now? Those in favor, opposed, so ordered, okay. We are on, it's getting late, so instructional, oh, here we go, instructional assistance.
Hi.
Anybody on instructional assistance? Oh, I missed one? Okay, we are on, oh, teacher substitute salaries, okay, on page one ninety-one. So I know there was some, I thought we changed the policy a little bit when it comes to substitute teachers. I think I read somewhere, maybe it was in your letter, like trying to be competitive more in salaries and. And how are we doing? How is that working out for the next year? So you think, it must be hard to get substitute teachers, I would think, right?
Through the chair, we, actually, the committee took action right when I started in July and we increased it. That helped. It's not ideal, it's been a difficult time to staff. I, I don't think we're making any, we're not making any recommendations to increase it at this time. We're competitive in that area. We do want to continue to fund it because we should have both our building substitutes as well as day-to-day subs available. And we have used them throughout the year.
So it's working out, okay, good. So motion to approve, are those in favor, opposed, so ordered? We have instructional assistance salaries on page 192. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through the chair to administration. In the answer to our budget questions, we were told that there are approximately, because we know this is a moving target, 87 open paraprofessional positions. Now, my assumption, because as we learned elsewhere in the budget, you know, the enormous preponderance of our paraprofessional positions are special education positions. My assumption is that, that most of them are probably within that special education area. But through the chaired administration, I did wonder if we had, I'm not asking for exact numbers, but i- is that correct? And is there some other piece of, of sort of the, um, the general ratio that we should be aware of in terms of those open positions?
So you're, you are accurate, the majority are in our special ed settings.
Thanks. And so I know that something that administration is, is probably also work, is also looking at is, are we, are we meeting the needs of our students in the most effective way by providing these staff members? So I, I know that we don't want to make shifts now, but I think that I'll be interested in seeing what that gives us in terms of where we end up with. And then the only thing I will say, Mr. Chair, is that the, the, the question around the, the paraprofessionals in the kindergarten classroom, and I, Dr. Morris already sort of anticipated where I was going with this, which was that, I, I do just want to reiterate that for most of our students, kindergarten is their first classroom experience. And, you know, my joke always was, not my joke, my, the, the thing that I always said about teaching secondary was, you know, everybody knows how to tie their shoes and everybody can blow their own nose. And there's a need for additional adults in those, in those really young ages. And it has bothered me that we continue to have an inequity across the city that, you know, our schools just kind of cope with, because that's the way that things have been. And it does feel like this is the year where we actually can finally bring ourselves up to parity and make sure that there's actually a parent in every classroom. So as we move through, I have a few other recommendations. Thanks.
Okay, all set? So the motion is to approve, those in favor, opposed, so ordered? We are on athletic coach salaries on page 194, athletic coaches. What's that? Oh, we already did that, that's correct, yeah. Transportation salaries on page 195. Okay, we also have transportation salaries. Miss Novick?
Mr. Chair, it does feel as if, you know, it would only, it would only be right for us to recognize the enormous amount of work that our transportation department has done this year. I, I think, I know, I, I think I've quoted member Kamara more than once. She, who said in a finance and operations meeting that we just, like, this is just how things are now, and this is just our expectation. But I know particularly any of us who were on the committee when we were having this sort of incredible meltdown can reflect on what our, among other things, what our Facebook Messenger messages look like at 7:30 on an average school day morning. And we can even go farther back to when I wasn't on the committee and I was messaging member McCullough to tell her that my school bus wasn't coming, or my kid's school bus wasn't coming. So I, I do just want to really acknowledge with enormous appreciation I mean, everyone's work. And certainly the administrators and those who, who do the, the operational end over there. But the other thing is that we did something else that was really necessary, but also was somewhat revolutionary, which is that we had staff that were already working for us. And then we brought in staff, mostly from Durham, but also from other places. And, you know, any of us who have walked into the transportation facility during the day, it's one group of people who are all pulling together in the same direction. Speaking, by the way, a whole bunch of different languages, which I also think is fantastic. So I, I do just want to say that the, the degree to which this is just, it's a Worcester Public School Department and it does its job every day. And because we don't hear about it, that means that things are working. And also, of course, I want to reflect also on the somewhat sort of innocent question that, that Vice Chair Johnson posed last year, which is, well, how come we, you know, we, we make sure that the athletes can go to their stuff, but how come we don't do it for anyone else who has extracurriculars? That just then expanded naturally, again, without us having to speak to transportation, to not only that, but to field trips and to so much more. Which has provided enormous amounts of opportunity for so many of our students. So I, I just want to make sure that that's sort of out there. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can we approve, uh, member Johnson?
Thank you, to the chair, to the administration. In regards to, I just, I don't know where this falls, and I, I don't know what we're doing. So I, I know prior to COVID, we were providing transportation to students who had after-school programs to different places. And that had stopped during COVID, you couldn't do, and then after COVID, we did not start that back up. So, one, where would that fall at in this line item? And where are we at with going back to providing transportation to our students for after-school programs that they need to attend?
Uh, Ms., Ms. Allen? Through the chair, so we actually did resume providing after-school transportation to the extent that we, and we're following the rules that we actually had before COVID, which was if we have a bus going in the direction of that after-school provider and we have capacity on the bus, then we have been allowing students to be placed on that bus to get to the after-school provider. The challenge has, and I think where we're sitting is, because we're running fewer buses, there's fewer buses potentially going in the areas of some of the after-school providers. So we had a meeting, I think it was maybe four or five months ago, with most of those after-school providers with the expectation we'd have another meeting this summer to let us know, let them know where we are in our hiring status, where we are in the number of routes we're planning to run for next year, and the capacity we have to provide students a way to get to some of the after-school placements.
And in regards to, in regards to that, if someone was interested in that, how would they go about reaching out to inquire regarding this?
So the practice, through the chair, so the practice has been that we've had direct communication, transportation department has had direct communication with the after-school providers themselves. And then we've been reaching out to, or through the schools, and reaching out to the schools to see, see if there's a ability to get that student on one of the buses headed in that direction.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay. Those in favor, approve? Those in favor, opposed, so ordered? Okay. We are on supplemental program salaries on page 198. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to administration, we, so, first of all, on page 199, there's several of these where the, setting aside the things that have been coming in and out of ASR, they're, they seem to be sort of bouncing around. So in line D, we budgeted at the $80,000 last year. We expect to only spend 52, we're budgeting 80,000 again. Similarly, in the ABA home servicing, we budgeted over 100,000 last year, we're expecting to spend 27. I appreciate that we're only budgeting 48, but do we have, and then the same thing with the AVID program. Do we have a sense of what's happening with any of those? And I realize those are kind of disparate directions through the chaired administration.
May I have a superintendent?
Going to ask Dr. Morris, Dr. Maganias, Miss Seal to come up, that's a variety of programs that we just listed. Thank you.
So I think, I think I'm asking you about, we budgeted $80,000 for advanced placement last year. We spent 50, we're expecting to spend 52. Do we know what happened? Through the chair.
I think our plan is to continue to support advanced placement programs. Our students took 2,057 exams this past May in all of our high schools, and so we plan for that support to continue. We also support our students with after-school extra help and through the Saturday sessions in some of the courses through MIE. So that support will continue. We do get some reimbursements for the AP fees through the state and through MIE, so that may be the difference. But we do plan to continue the AP program for the next school year.
Okay, so some of this is, is potentially about us maybe getting funding from someplace else that we're using?
Potentially, yes.
And thank you, by the way, for mentioning the number of tests that were taken. I appreciate the fact that we simply have carried forward the fact that if you were going to take an AP exam in the Worcester Public Schools, it's paid for by the Worcester Public Schools. I think that in terms of us, I guess, literally putting our money where our mouth is, I think that's something that's actually really important. Thank you. And then I think the, the question about the, but different between the ABA home servicing program, we budgeted 100,000 and it only, we only spent 27?
Yes, through the chair. Autism behavioral, applied behavioral analysis is home service program sets of recommended by the IEP teams. And as for our students who have autism special disorders, it's a team decision as to when we provide those services. So at one point, we did have more students that required those services. And now we're providing more services to students within the district. And some of our students do not require those home services. However, we do have students that do require home ABA services, and that's why there's a reduction in number. I think that the recommendation is to leave it pretty much within a similar budget is because we anticipate that things may change throughout the school year.
Sure, thank you. And I appreciate, by the way, the responsiveness the administration has to things like the sale preschool and that kind of thing in terms of us keeping a continued eye on what's coming towards us. Great, and what about the AVID program?
The district is continuing the AVID program. We currently have 19 schools that are participating in the program. And so we also are supporting the AVID licenses for these schools and supporting the team meetings for these schools. So that is the funding that will continue to move forward for our elementary and our secondary schools.
Okay, do we have a sense as to why we only spent $12,000 this year? When it was budgeted for 37?
I think we'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, it's curiosity, I mean, keeping, keeping it the same amount is fine, that's, that's fine. Thanks. So then to turn the page over to 200. Just since we had a back and forth about this last year, the after-school drop-off session, center for this coming year is going to be at North High School? Because I think it's at Clark Street now through the chaired administration? Or did we move it again?
Who's that?
Who knows that? The Safe Haven, right, so the, and speaking as someone who has had to use it before, right? So this is the kid gets left on the school bus because the parents aren't there and we have to bring them somewhere. So it's going to be at North High School?
Yes.
Okay, and we need increased, increased staff coverage because we didn't think we had enough people for the students who were being dropped off through the chaired administration?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. The me, the music enrichment program in line K, we haven't talked about that in a while, is that, are we, it says after-school programs. I know that we were at one point doing that during the school day. Did we, when we put, came back into buildings, stop doing it during the school day? And now we only do it after school? Through the chaired administration?
Through the chair, our music instrumental lessons do continue through the school day.
Okay.
And then this is in addition to.
This is in addition to, great, because I know that there's a huge equity issue as soon as we start having kids stay after school. Thank you. The, so a question that I've been curious about, and partly this is reflecting on the, the Adult Learning Center where they had sort of a, I don't know, if, if you've never been to the Adult Learning Center ceremony, I really recommend it. That partly through state support, partly honestly through federal support, Representative McGovern's been very good to us in terms of that, kind of expands to fill the, not the need yet, but we tend to get support for that program from a lot of different sources. And while it's outside of, sort of much of what we spend our time on, I want to make sure that we're really being supportive the way that we as a district need to on that. And I'm wondering if, I mean, first of all, I'm disturbed to see the Adult Learning Center line go down. Are we, do we actually have the staff support from our budget that we need to support what I know to be largely grant-funded programs through the chaired administration? And how are we gauging that?
Through the chair, currently, we believe we have the right funding for the programs we run right now. With Chris Chersonas' position, we plan on enhancing and expanding some of our adult education programming. So that may shift. But for now, for what we have planned for this year, the idea is go small to go big. And right now, we feel the staffing that we have is adequate. But we believe in future years, we may be asking for more.
Okay, thank you. All set, Mr. Chair?
All set. Member Clancy, follow me, member Kamara?
Thank you. So I just have one question regarding line J, which St. Casimir's clinical program. So I know that there's clinical staff based at St. Casimir's. So I'm just curious what the 18,000 in additional is in terms of the clinical services for that program?
Through the chair, historically, that has been a budget line item that has been on, been longstanding throughout my tenure and before. And my understanding is that they provide services for the students, tutorial services after school, before school, as well as clinical services throughout the school year.
So is it something that we see continuing next year, before school, after school? And I believe, if I remember correctly, some summer hours were used for this. And I know that that's looking a little different this year. So is that something that we're going to hold in the budget with hopes to continue going further?
It's my understanding that it is proposed in the budget for this fiscal year, and that's something that will be ongoing. I would have to refer to administration.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Member Kamara?
Thank you. So I want to ask some questions about the AVID program, and I think that's amazing. I heard that we are now putting that into our elementary schools. Wonderful. Is it all the elementary schools or is this a sample of?
Through the chair, the AVID program is at City View, Norbeck, Chandler Magnet, Quon Siggamend, May Street, Nelson Place, Lincoln Street, Canterbury and Rice Square this school year.
So are we the, so are we going to expand? Is that with this, is that what I heard?
Through the chair, at this time, we do not have any additional schools that will be joining for next school year at the elementary level.
Okay. And then just for clarification, is that program going to be already under college and career readiness? Or like, what does that look like?
Through the chair, at this time, it is in the Office of Curriculum and Professional Learning.
Okay, okay. I guess like the reason why I'm asking, because we had a, what, TLSS? And it's really amazing that we have it in the elementary school because it's, it was a question, a puzzle that I had that perhaps could be linked by this program at the elementary level with regards to keeping up with students from the elementary level to the middle school, to the high school, where that you could have a portfolio of students in your interest, which I don't think we currently do out of the AVID program. So I would love to talk to you about, about that. Because I think that's the way that we could do that. But that's, this is budget, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Millman?
Just clarification that adult education does not include nightlife. Thank you.
All set? So we'll take... So take both of these line items together? Are those in favor or opposed, so ordered? Custodial Services, page two oh one. Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chaired administration, in the very useful vacancy information we got, we were told that currently there are seventeen positions open. And I know that as I've been going to schools and so forth, and I'm sure I'm the only one that's heard this, it's providing a considerable strain on the system because we're having to move, you know, places where there are two, somebody covering an opening and some of the second shift stuff. And obviously, we've, we've moved money to cover overtime. And I'm wondering through the chaired administration, sort of how we're seeing our prospects on that as we head into summertime in filling those positions? If there are particular things that we're doing that are kind of maybe new or unusual in terms of recruiting? Any of that sort of thing?
Sally?
Through the chair, so I think since we've even done this report, we've hired two custodians. I think our current vacancies is fifteen at this point in time. Mister, I can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we have six additional that are in the pipeline, core checks and so forth. So some of those would likely pan out. And we actually just discussed this week some strategies if we can tap into any mass hire programs or some like we do with bus drivers for custodians or any other networking that we can do to recruit custodians. So that is what I would think is the highest priority right now for custodians is to fill the vacant positions. So that's where, now we have a kind of a new facilities team in place. They can focus some of their efforts on recruiting people for filling those vacancies.
Thank you.
Those in favor, opposed, so ordered? We have Maintenance Service salaries, page two oh two. Improve that, are those in favor, opposed, so ordered? They have clerical salaries, administrative clerical salaries on page two oh three. Good, motion is though, number Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the, the space where I, I really question, and one of the places I really question in addition. I understand that we have elementary schools that have limited amount of, of staff in them. But in terms of, and I understand that there are additional responsibilities that are going to be moving towards some of those positions with the workday system and so forth. But twenty is a lot, twenty is a lot in terms of a secretarial ad. And so this is where my proposal, Mr. Chair, is that we take half of those. So we know that the larger elementary schools in many cases either already have one or have one, either already have one and a half or have two or so forth, that we have maybe kind of a middle tier in terms of enrollment, and then we have some of our smaller schools. I would like to propose, Mr. Chair, that we take effectively half of these positions and, and move that funding into the paraprofessional account. I, I don't want to predeliberate, I don't want to deliberate outside of the account. So I know we're going to be tempted to start to stray into the proposal that administration made. I just want to say that I, I would, I would really have a hard time moving money out of literacy positions this year with a new elementary curriculum. But my, my proposal then, Mr. Chair, is to take six hundred thousand dollars from administrative clerical and move it into the paraprofessional account as a way of moving money towards the twenty paraprofessional positions.
Okay, anybody else? Is it all done or? Member Novak, member Clancy?
Thank you. I would also support that I have actually been in contact with some of our clerical support at some of our schools. And I, I want to say that if we do the ten additional, I think it needs to be on a needs basis because I, some schools that I've talked to were very honest with me and said, if I had another person here, I, I don't know what I would do with them. But I would like to make an amendment to that motion because I did hear the need for two almost like floater positions to be covered for when they are out. I know that there's, I spoke with some clerical staff who say, we have a really hard time covering when I need to go, you know, when I'm trying to take vacation or sick days and whatnot. So I would like to add, either take the ten and take two of those, but have at least two floater positions that are fully trained and that could go to different schools to cover when our clerical staff are out.
Now Superintendent? I don't, I don't see so many answers.
No, I just would like to hear administration put forth a proposal for twenty new positions. So who will speak to that?
Superintendent?
Thank you.
So through the chair, the, the rationale for the need for these positions really are twofold. One, in that what ends up happening at an elementary school when there is only one, one secretary is that, and the administrator ends up filling in and taking over for secretarial type of work. And that's not, not what we hire them to do. So if the secretary is busy, and the front office is a very busy space where we greet our families, that's the very first place that you greet families, whether it's by the phone or it's in person. If the secretary is busy with a family for whatever reason, then I have been at my schools and I have seen where it is the principal who is handling it, which is fine, but it's not what we, that they are to fill in on emergency situations, not on a daily basis. We need them walking our classrooms, we need them providing teacher feedback. We need them to be that instructional transformational leader. So that's one of the reasons is them filling in when the secretary isn't there. I, I appreciate the idea of a floater. I think that would actually help because I've had principals tell me when the secretary's not there, out for sickness or whatever life, they are filling in there. So that, that would be helpful. A second piece is heard loud and clear from the community during my listening and learning tour, the importance of having a welcoming space when our families come in. And, and that would include individuals who are multilingual. And right now, that's not most of our staff. Now, this isn't the only reason why, but that this can also provide an opportunity to hire multilingual individuals that would again be part of our family support to our families. I don't, in speaking with Mr. Allen, and I hadn't even thought of this, but this will be a new piece with our new workday system that's coming from the city. Things that our current secretaries don't do, they will be required to do. They don't even know what's coming yet because it hasn't happened. But we know that things that have been handled at the district level because of the way the system work is going to be changing. So they don't know that yet. So of course, when they're making decisions, it's based off of their current status, not future. The last piece that when our, and I'll let Ms. Hassellos to speak more to this. When our school adjustment counselors heard about someone addition that can really help with the work of attendance, they were actually very grateful. And so, and they shared this with her, so if you'll speak a little to that.
Yeah, so during my listening sessions back in January with my team, I met with the school adjustment counselors. And one of their biggest concerns is that the attendance calls were eating up about two hours per day during the school day. And so when I expressed to them that this was going to be put into the budget during a meeting that I had with most of the school adjustment counselors, they were extremely pleased because they could spend more time addressing the mental health needs of our students. So that will also be part of the administrative clerk's role.
Okay. Member Clancy?
So yes, thank you. So my question though is, the typical attendance calls that a school adjustment counselor is making is not the typical attendance calls that we're asking our clerical staff to be making. They're completely different situations where a school adjustment counselor is, you know, deeping, you know, digging deep to find out why the student isn't coming to school, you know, what's going on. I think the clerical staff is just making a phone call. I, I don't know why the clerical staff would be making a phone call if a student is absent. I can't think of a scenario. But I'm just, I just think the school adjustment counselors' phone calls are much different than what a clerical staff phone call would be.
Ms. Hassellos?
So through the chair, right now, they're making most of the attendance calls. And so this would take away a lot of that weight off of school adjustment counselors.
But are they making attendance calls to find out why the students are significantly absent?
Yes.
And trying to dig deep if there's services that they need or if there's other reasons why the students are absent?
So the way I envision this is they would make the preliminary call. And it's really a shared responsibility because we understand the school adjustment counselor would still have to follow up with families. But it would really help to alleviate the time that it's taken the school adjustment counselors to make all of those calls and kind of weed out the ones that they wouldn't have to dig deeper to provide additional services, if that makes any sense.
And I'm not trying to be, but I've, my daughters have been absent and no one's ever made an attendance call to my house. And my daughter, right now, my high school is at like thirteen absences. Sorry, but it's true.
And that in itself is not okay. That's a problem. So we have to, not, not that this would take care of that because you're talking high school, right?
Right.
That's, we should not, we should have a better tracking system and know if a student is missing that many days, that's a potential chronic absenteeism. We want to get those supports that are needed, not to put your daughter on the.
No, it's fine.
But you know, so those are the kind of things that we're looking at.
Right, and I, like I said, and I understand, but I just know, speaking with some of the elementary principals and clerical staff, I just don't know if twenty are needed across the board. That's just my concern. If it's, I want it more to be more of a need than more of, we're telling them, we're putting another person here. You need to come up with things for them to do.
Okay, all set? Member McColl?
Thank you, I think then to tag on to member Clancy's question, was the proposal of twenty based on the principals asking for those twenty spots? Or were we just filling every school that didn't have two?
So I'll respond to that. When I, and I'm going to take it a step further back. When the committee hired me, one of the asks of the committee in a general sense was to bring in the experience that I have working in schools for twenty-eight years. Which I'm finishing up, twenty-nine, so there you go. And what are some things that I've seen over the years that are missing here? What can further help? And I will say that I have, this, this is my very first time walking into elementary schools and not seeing two people in a front office in any district I've ever worked in. And it's because the front office is the welcoming space. The front office is, a child comes in and they've got, you know, they just scraped their knee and, and that, that front office is the place that helps them. Now, I know we have, we have people that do that too, but I've had that in other schools as well, where you have a nurse and you have, and, and you have, they've always been called office managers, and you have a clerk. And the clerk is the one that calls the homes if a child's absent to clear, why is this child absent? The clerk is the one who is the initial greeter to the families when they come in. They're the one who answers the phone within the first three rings so that families know that there's somebody there. The office manager is the one that runs the back room, if you will, of the school and all the clerical behind the scenes to, so that the principal can actually lead the school. So it did not come from the principals because the principals have, they only know what they know. Our larger elementary schools have one, at least two, I guess, some one and a half people. And then our principals have done these workarounds. So just like they've done workarounds in other areas, they've done this workaround. So I understand it's a lot of positions all at once. I firmly believe, and, and we can go slow on this one too, but once our schools get a second person and they see what is required of them, they will be asking for it just like they started asking for the dean. You don't know what you don't know yet. And that's, that's the other side of it. So it is not a die-hard ask. It is definitely something that I would like us to work towards in the future. We don't have to do it all at once.
So would administration be comfortable with the proposal of the ten plus the two float? Would that be something that would work in this model to start out with and then look at for next year fully?
Yes, we would be comfortable with it. And my only, and it's just the, the hard part on here is, I would really want us to then very much be clear on, is it ten or is it only eight because based off of number? And I don't have those numbers right here, right now. So if we budget on ten and we do two extra, and if we during the, the year see, you know, we're going to just start with these schools based off of data, maybe we go to the schools with the highest attendance need. And we, we place them there and then we, we monitor. That's my only thought, but we would be okay, it would be fine to start small knowing that it is a priority of the committee to have also the paraprofessionals, which we are in agreement is also needed.
Thank you, I think, you know, the ten full-time, and then, not that the others wouldn't be full-time, but being more of two floats would be something I would be comfortable with to see how it goes and then go from there. But that's just my opinion.
Okay, so also the vote on the two floats, the amendment? Number Novak?
So we're going to need, so first of all, that's going to leave me sixty-five thousand dollars short, just to be clear. We're not actually going to have the money to do the twenty, the way that I was talking about. We also would need to change the, if what you're doing is making a motion, we need to change what the motion is because we would need to change the dollar amount that we're transferring. I also just want to say that what was just described, just in kind of all of my experience as a Worcester Public School parent, isn't actually how absences come to families. We have an automated calling system, we get a computerized phone call that tells us that our student was absent. I have had outreach, but I, I want to say I really strongly, strongly agree with member Clancy that it, it really shouldn't be the person at the front desk who's making a phone call to say, your kid's been absent a lot and we want to check on that. Like, first of all, that's not the place that that conversation should be heard or possibly overheard. But secondly, also, I, my, my sense is that this is why we're making sure we have wraparound coordinators at every school and it's also why we have the adjustment counselors that we do. So I'm still not actually hearing an attendance thing that they're actually doing that is actually their, the responsibility of, of the clerical position within a school. Because that's, that's, it's just, it's not where the phone call comes from. It's certainly not where the initial phone call comes from, and then a follow-up phone call. If our intent is to put people in touch with services, we have a different job for that. So I mean, I, I would say that if what we want to do is two floaters, I would say let's keep the ten and make it eight that are staffing and two that are floating. Because, you know, I, I agree that in terms of, you know, what I have seen in front offices, they can get busy, they also can be really quiet. We have schools that are lots and lots and lots of different sizes that have lots and lots of different levels of sort of activity and need in those front offices. And I, I understand the notion of the principal as instructional leader. I also think that once in a while, having the principal being the person who's at the front desk is kind of a nice thing. I, I think it can kind of be positive. So, you know, unless my colleagues want to, I guess I need, I would like to know, are my colleagues proposing that we have eight positions that are in, in particular position, places with two floaters? Or are you suggesting that we would effectively have twelve positions and be moving the money for eight?
What was the motion? That's a good question, I wasn't clear on that myself.
No, so to be clear, I'm fine, if it gives us the positions for our, including the literacy tutor transfers, so we're still short with those two floater positions, in my understanding, I didn't do the math, so.
So, so I was, I was avoiding touching the literacy tutors in what I was putting together. The administration is constructing sort of a different, a different column of addition.
So what's suggested is to cut ten positions and a recommend recommendation to the superintendent that whether she uses eight and two, two floaters, is that correct? So that's already been, the money's already been worked out?
That was what I was trying to, was attempting to clarify with, with really member Clancy in terms of her recommendation.
Yeah, I'll do the, I, I'm fine, as long as administration, the eight positions with the two floaters.
Member McColl?
I'm sorry, and I don't want to keep belaboring this. So that's still just 10 positions, right?
Correct.
So I guess I would say, 10 positions is fine, and if you feel the float would work that way, or if they need to be in an actual building, I would be fine with that. Like, I'm okay with the 10 positions. I was thinking of the float earlier as an option for some of the schools that may not be as busy, but if we're not doing all 20, then that's probably a moot point anyway. So the 10 positions is fine with me.
Okay. Just, uh, Member Millman?
And if we're really trying to, through the chair, hit a certain number of kindergarten positions, we don't even know what that number is, do we? Do we have that solid number?
$900,000.
Through the chair, 900, we're trying to achieve $900,000. You'll be at 785.
But do we know that that's the number of, we know that for sure. Okay, thank you.
We know that we need 20 instructional, eh, paraprofessionals to cover all of our existing kindergarten classrooms and future ones that we know about.
Thank you.
Okay, we good on that, everyone? So the motion is to make that transfer of 10 positions, and also to approve this. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, we're going to break and go into executive session, and we will come back and do the, at least the recognitions. We can either go and finish, either way, it's going to be the budget when we come back, or it's going to be, we can keep the budget to the end, one or the other, so. Okay. What? Oh, we have our conditions, are people here?
Are they here? Is it just, or is it just the, is the actual secretary?
Is Meredith Ford here? Yeah, we do now, we've got them here. So who do you want, who's on the, hang on. So first one is set a date, recognize Andrea Cook, a teacher at Burncote Middle School, who has been awarded the 2023 Donna Nagel Award for Excellence in General Music. Member... I'm not sure if she, okay, we'll go to the next one, let's go to the next one. Okay, so we're going to recognize Andrea Cook, teacher at Burncote Middle, who has been awarded the 2023 Donna Nagel Award for Excellence in General Music. Andrea?
Yes, so a little bit about this award. It's presented annually, it's very nice to see you. It recognizes someone who's been a leader in the field of general music in Massachusetts, and anyone who visits Burncote Middle knows that about Ms. Cook. This award is, may be given to any MEA member, don't ask me what that acronym means, but I'm sure Massachusetts and music is part of that, Massachusetts Music Educator Association. And you have to qualify by either being employed by a private or public institution for at least 10 years, and demonstrated outstanding leadership and dedication in the general field of music, and has made important contributions to this field. And I've only been here for, as we know, just under a year, and I have already seen Ms. Cook in action more than once, and her advocacy for the program and the students she serves is definitely to be commended, and I can't think of someone who should not be receiving this award, anybody better than you, Ms. Cook. So thank you for your service and dedication.
Okay, we have a certificate of recognition of Andrea Cook for receiving the 2023 Donna Nagel Award for Excellence in General Music, signed by myself, the superintendent, and the entire Worcester School Committee. Okay, well, next one up, we have set a date to recognize Meredith Ford for receiving the William P. Foster Community Development Award. Meredith? Good to see you. Congratulations. You also have Superintendent.
Yeah, so let me talk a little bit about this award. So this also is given annually, and it's given to band directors, who provide strong music education experience for students, and the positive impact on the school and I'm just reading my notes. So nominees are then requested to provide a short written description of their student's school and community impact. I can only imagine what you may have written. I'm not going to put you on the spot to share that, but I'm sure it was pretty phenomenal. School band directors are eligible, and you have to have been in the position for at least five years. I have not been able to see Ms. Lord in action quite as much, but I can only imagine how fabulous her work has been, and it's always so nice for Worcester Public Schools employees who give so incredibly much to be recognized. So again, thank you for everything you do for our scholars, much appreciated.
Oh, so we have a nice gift here? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, hi, how are you? Oh my goodness, thank you, thank you.
You did well?
You're not supposed to gift us when we're recognizing you, but thank you.
Okay, we do have a certificate of recognition to Meredith Ford for receiving the William P. Foster Community Development Award, signed by myself, the superintendent, and the entire Worcester School Committee. Here you go, Meredith, congratulations.
Let me take a picture.
So why don't you two get in the middle? Andrea and Meredith get right here in the middle, and we'll take a group shot, I guess. And a student still, yep.
Okay, ready? On three, one, two, three. Thank you.
will take a half hour to read, but, okay, so we're going to discuss strategy with respect to, we will return to open session after executive session. So the motion is go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If the open meeting have a detrimental effect on the buying position of the public party, and the chair so declares, which I do for the following items: success of contract negotiations at EAW units A and B, successful contract negotiations, EAW instructional assistance, and also for international union of public employees, plumbers and steam fitters, local 125, also for international union of public employees, tradesmen, and local 135, and also for teams, local 170, and for behalf of the Worcester Public Schools, transportation mechanics, and also Massachusetts Laborers District Council for and on behalf of the Worcester Public Service Employees, local unit 272, the Laborers International Union of North America, AFL-CIO, educational secretaries, and also for the Education Association of Worcester Parent Liaison Associations, and also for NAGI 1 to 156, 52-week Administrative Secretaries Unit, and also for Education Association for Worcester Therapy Assistance Unit, and also for Massachusetts Nurses Association for on behalf of the Worcester School Nurses. And to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining for the June 10th holiday, for all Worcester Public School bargaining units, for the EAW A and B, for EAW of Worcester aids the physically handicapped, members and drivers, EAW of Worcester Instructional Assistance, EAW of Worcester Parent Liaison, EAW of Worcester Tutors, Education Association of Worcester Therapy Assistance, NAGI 1 to 156, 52-week secretaries, NAGI 1 to 16, cafeteria workers, international union of public employees, plumbers and steam fitters, local 125, international union of public employees, tradesmen, local 135, Massachusetts Nurses Association, Worcester School Nurses, Worcester Public Service Employees, local unit 272, of the Laborers International Union of North America, AFL-CIO, Educational Secretaries, Massachusetts Laborers District Council for on behalf of the Worcester Public Schools Employees, local unit 272, the Laborers International Union of North America, AFL-CIO, also for custodians, Massachusetts Laborers District Council for on behalf of the Worcester Public Schools Service Employees, for local unit 272, the Laborers International Union of North America, AFL-CIO, Unit D, computer technicians, and the teams, local unit 170, for on behalf of the Worcester Public Schools Transportation Mechanics. And also, for former employee teacher, we have a litigation, and also declared that this was detrimental to the public party, so we have a former employee versus the Worcester Public Schools, charged filed with the Massachusetts Commission against Discrimination. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes.